Good evening, everyone. We'll open the meeting. Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open the meeting up to public comment. Please come up to the podium, state your name, and you can ask any questions that you'd like. For agenda items only is our front end. Our back end is general items. So, we're open to public comment. Okay, well, oh.
Hi again. I'm Leigh Weaver, third grade teacher at the elementary school. I just wanted to thank members of the board who reached out to me after last meeting to clarify questions about the Capitol Project and also to thank Mr. Butler and Mr. Miller for following through with me as well. So, I feel like we have a good sense, when I say "we," me and the people I've told, have a good sense of the plan. And it seems like also that Kevin Rizzo has had also another productive conversation with Mr. Miller about the timeline of going forward and the meetings that will occur. So, thank you for making that happen.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment. Tonight, we have a couple special presentations. The first is going to be the Leaders of the Pack, and then the second one will be our budget presentation and the school report card, or the property tax report card. So, for Leaders of the Pack, I'll ask our elementary school come up first.
So, Samaya's our second grader. She's our Leader of the Pack for April. She is in Tina Asa's class. Thank you, Mrs. Asa, for being here. So, Tina Asa shared, Mrs. Asa shared, that Samaya has a positive attitude when she comes to school. She is a hard-working student and is always striving to improve her work. Coach Helmer, your physical ed. teacher, said, "Samaya always has a smile on her face in physical education. She is ready to learn every day and is very respectful to her teachers and her classmates." Mrs. McCaffrey, your music teacher, said, "Samaya always comes to music with a smile on her face and tries her best every time. She loves to sing and makes the best choices during music class." Mrs. Turksky and Mrs. Erickson from Math AIS said, "Samaya motivates her peers to do well, and her kindness and energy radiates especially during small group work." So, for that and many more reasons, you are our Leader of the Pack for April. Congratulations.
This is Leah Osterhout. Leah is a hard-working student and athlete. She is independent, goes out of her way to help other students. Her positive attitude is inspiring." That was from your Spanish teacher, Mr. Lovely. Ms. Burnett said, "Leah is an engaged, dynamic student who's always willing to help. She goes the extra mile when it comes to putting effort into her work and elevates classroom expectations." Mr. Peterson says, "Leah is a bright young lady who has excelled in the math classroom this year. No matter what unit of study we have worked on, she participates often and advocates for herself when needed. Ms. Besko and I love having her in class." Mr. Conklin shares that Leah is a hard-working student who's always looking to assist others around the class. She has shown that she is a self-starter and is motivated to do her best on every assignment. Mr. Banks says that Leah is a great candidate for Leader of the Pack. She's a hard worker and shows leadership skills. I've had the privilege to be her teacher and her coach, and she impresses me with her drive and determination in the classroom and on the basketball court. I can't wait to see everything she can accomplish next year as an eighth grader." Ms. Besko shares that Leah is truly an amazing student and kid. She's a natural leader who embodies kindness, dedication, responsibility, and a great sense of humor. She excels academically and brightens every environment with her positivity and amazing personality. Leah's genuine willingness to help others and her work ethic make her an amazing role model for her peers. And finally, Mr. Donoghue says that Leah is driven to do well in class and always has a smile for those around her. Leah, we're very proud of you.
Good evening, public. My name is Brandon Opitz. I'm the Assistant Principal at the high school. I have the pleasure to present Connor Gemmell tonight, senior at Highland High School for Leader of the Pack. I am going to share about eight blurbs, both current and former teachers, on amazing things that, you know, Connor has done over the years here in Highland. On a personal note, I did have the opportunity to spend some time with Connor over this past weekend on our senior Florida trip, and there was no issues, I promise. He was a good student. So, moving forward. Mr. Tatum, English teacher here at the high school. Prior to this semester, all I knew about Connor was what I observed of him as an athlete, which was a passionate, lead-by-exemple player who leaves everything on the field. As I've gotten to spend more time with him over the past 10 weeks, I've gotten to know him as a thoughtful, hard-working student who is both confident in his ability and willing to accept constructive criticism and who is courteous and respectful to his peers. In other words, his character off the field matches his excellence on it. Mr. Cazalino in the Science Department. Connor is a responsible and respectful student. He demonstrates to his peers that hard work pays off, both on the field and in the classroom. He is a great choice for Leader of the Pack. Congratulations, Connor, from Mr. Cazalino. Ms. Petrasoff from English. You might not necessarily notice it at first, but Connor Gemmell is a natural-born leader. He can, at times, appear quiet and unassuming, but when you get to know Connor, you will realize that his humor, his humility disarms his peers while his character and solid decision-making skills enable him to serve as a role model for them. I cannot wait to see what's ahead for you, Connor. I have no doubt you will make us all very proud. From Coach Rizzo. First sentence. It's about time Connor Gemmell got recognized for Student of the Month. Teaching and coaching Connor has been a highlight in my career. I've had the opportunity to teach Khan, is that your nickname? For him? Okay. News to me. As both a middle-schooler and high-schooler, kindness, dignified, and focus are my words to describe this young student. Most of all, he has grown into a tremendous, natural leader that inspires his peers both academically and athletically. I cannot wait to see what his future has in store for him. Coach Mancuso from PhysEd. Connor is a great student who brings a lot of fun energy to PE. Connor is fun, kind, and helpful. I know Connor will do great things in his future. Coach Mango for Varsity Baseball and Social Studies. He has all the qualities to be Leader of the Pack. He always represents his school with class. He is kind and compassionate to students and staff. He plays football and baseball for Highland High School and is the team captain for both teams. He leads by example. He is humble, and he is kind. He is excellent student that does his work. It is with great pleasure to see that he is Leader of the Pack for this month. I cannot stress enough how kind he is towards everyone. He also goes to all sporting events and supports all teams within our district. He truly is a tremendous young man. Ms. Trippany, or Ms. Wiston in the Math Department. I have had the pleasure of teaching Connor the last three years and watching him grow into a mature, respectful young man. It has been such a gift. Connor is always so kind and thoughtful. He is a hard worker with an equal balance of dedication and eagerness to please. He always puts a smile on my face. The halls will not be the same without you next year. And lastly, and concluding with this, the last teacher that I had reached out to was Ms. Hollifield, your kindergarten teacher. I enjoyed all of my time as Connor's kindergarten teacher 12 years ago. He was always such a respectful, dedicated, caring, intelligent, and amazing student. Being part of the Highland community, I've had the privilege of watching him become a respectful, dedicated, caring, and intelligent and amazing young man. He is a leader, and I am confident that Connor has a wonderful future ahead of him that will be filled with happiness and success. So, for this month's Leader of the Pack, I present you Connor Gemmell. Congratulations.
Job well done. Congratulations. Now, we're going to do our budget presentation and property tax report card. Lindsay.
As Lindsay is getting started, I just want to announce that the New York State School Boards Association about two and a half hours ago sent out a statement that the New York State government has a conceptual budget agreement. And under Education, it says, "Supporting New York students through record funding for P-12 schools, investing a record $35.9 billion in total state aid, including $24.9 billion in foundation aid, lowering the inflation factor in the foundation aid formula to right-size funding for the 24-25 school year, and commissioning a Rockefeller Institute study to examine the foundation aid formula to prepare for changes next year." It goes on to say that the increase is $1.3 billion higher than what was seen last year. However, this does not tell us what we are getting here in Highland, and that is the frustrating part, that we waited what I would say is too long for us to make informed decisions moving forward. We have to present a budget this evening, and I don't know, and I don't think any of the other superintendents know, or any of the folks that I've called in the last few hours, know whether we will have particular information for our school districts by the time we need to have an adopted budget here locally. So, I just prefaced tonight's presentation with, "It looks like there's some good news, but that news is incomplete at this point."
So, just to go off of what Joel is saying, again, you're going to see, for those of you who saw last week's presentation, a little bit of the same, but we are going through this presentation as if it were to be adopted. Tonight, we're going to review the revenue budget, the proposed additions we would take on with Save Harmless, also a review of the expense budget for next year. We need to review the contingency budget implications, and then the New York State property tax report card. So, this slide you've seen several times. It is the same revenue slide that we've had, and again, we will not have the estimated increases for us. We don't know when that's going to happen. Last year, that happened in May. So, at this point, the revenue that's highlighted in yellow is what we know. And then, I'll give this back to Mr. Freear.
So, we wanted to just point out, the administration this past week sat and spent many hours trying to determine what could be put back in if Save Harmless was put back into consideration, and then also if Save Harmless plus the 3% increase was put back into the budget. The administration came up with the following proposed priorities. If Save Harmless only is implemented, we would be restoring a 3-5 special education teacher. If Save Harmless and a 3% increase were to be realized, it would be that special education teacher, the teacher for middle-school technology, half of a music teacher, which was slated for the high school, one teaching assistant at each of the three buildings, and then elementary AIS reading. And some might ask why we were looking at teaching assistants. If we can't get our class sizes back to the sizes we had before, we feel that those teaching assistants are going to be invaluable to help with some of those class size increases that we saw under the very first proposal of a few weeks back. So, again, these are optimistic, but these are what was being rumored in the state as Save Harmless and possibly 3%. Now, if $1.9 billion, which is what the governor is saying, that there's a compromise and a budget, a conceptual agreement today, if 3% is what our increase is, this is where the administration would propose to return some of those positions to the budget.
Okay, so, the proposed funding without the finalized legislative budget. So, we have an option to be able to adopt the budget without having the legislative budget figures in. So, this discussion point is strictly based on the fact that where we're funding it from would be returned if state, if the legislative budget aid came in. So, in the February presentation, we talked about the fact that our ERS rates were going up, and they were going up to over 2%, which gave us an exclusion on our tax cap when we did those calculations. So, that leaves that bill to be over 15%. So, my proposal for this is to utilize some of that ERS reserve, approximately $250,000 of that, to pay for that ERS bill in the upcoming year, and utilize that $250,000 to give back to those positions, so that way we can move forward with keeping them. That does not equal the whole 3% if Save Harmless was in there, but it does help us move through in keeping some of those positions. The only factor with this would be is that if we did in fact get that state aid, that aid would be able to go back to the reserve. If we got over $250,000, and again, as I shared before, we, last year, heard this in May, so if it extends into June, what we could do, and if we had those figures before then, I would come up with a budget amendment that you would be able to adopt at the July reorg. meeting to add those additional funds in for the rest of the positions if we did get that full amount of the Save Harmless with 3%. So, we can go forward with that. Again, this is the unknown. We do not know if we're going to get Save Harmless or the 3%, but because of the situation with the ERS bill this year, and to save as many positions as we possibly can, I do think that this is a way that we can move forward in adopting the budget. Wrong? Not the clicker. So, what this shows then is that the last presentation, we had $250,000 less. Now, that $250,000 has been added into instruction, so that would give us a total of $54,309,46 for our budget that we would be adopting. Again, that's $250,000 more than the slides that you've seen in previous presentations. And again, that would be a balanced budget by adding those expenses and the revenue So, on top of that, we need to talk about contingency budget and what happens when the budget goes out on May 21st. If it does not pass, we can do the budget over again. If that does not pass, then you have to go to a contingency budget. So, what that means is that we can't raise the tax levy, so, and there is no equipment that can be purchased within the next year as well. So, the reduction from the tax levy for this year minus the equipment would be $962,937 more in cuts if this budget were to not pass. So, that's just something that needs to be identified in the process of adopting the The property tax report card. This is what needs to be submitted by the end of next week. This shows where we're going to be with our reserves, an estimated idea of where we're at, and what we are actual today, or at the end of March, actually, but what we're actual, we have a 4% reserve that we can have of our budget. Currently, we're only at 2, a little over 2%. What I'm proposing to happen for, at the end of this year, is that we are at a 4%. So, to build those reserves back up, so that way we are able to have those funds available for anything else that will come across, we've had, we would be able to utilize this for insurance purposes. We have had since the fire, we don't know what our insurance premiums are going to go up to. This is something that we can pull from if that were to happen, and other necessities that may come up during the course of that time. These are the projected restricted reserves. So, restricted reserves can only be used on what they are saved for. So, if you look, we have the Capital Reserve, our Tax Cert Reserve, Employee Benefit Reserve, Employee Retirement Reserve, and the Teacher's Retirement. So, for the end of this year, I am not proposing to fund any restricted reserve except for the Tax Cert, and that's because we do know of a bill that's coming. We just don't know when it's going to happen. This has been underfunded, so again, that 4% that we were talking about before, if this bill does come due for next year, we would be able to pull from that. You are only allowed to fill a restricted reserve by a certain amount, and we do know that that bill will be coming due either this coming year or the year after that. And our ERS reserve is where I am proposing to take that $250,000 out of to pay for that, to pay for the bill for next year. The ERS reserve can have up to five years of payments in it. So, the only restricted reserve increase proposed for next year would be the Tax Cert. This is just a proposal. You don't, the board doesn't actually adopt this until August, once the actual figures come out, because right now, we still have three months of the school year left. We don't know where we're going to end up, but this is a projected amount. So, this would be the proposition vote for the school budget. What you would be adopting if you chose to go this route is for the total of $54,309,46. That would be your first proposition. The second proposition is the bus proposition, and the third, meaning to restore the, renew the Capital Reserve as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Lindsay, can you explain to the board, if we do not adopt tonight, what's our next step? When do we have to have a drop-dead vote on the budget proposal and moving forward?
When I spoke with the attorney about when we could do an amended budget, and he had told me it would need to be after, at the reorg. meeting where it could be on July 1st, I did bring up when was the last possible date. We need to have military ballots out by April 23rd, so it would be in our best interest to adopt it by Monday.
At the latest Monday.
At the latest. And I don't know how much more information that we will be getting by that timeframe.
Any board members have any questions for Camille?
Just my concern with the, if we have to do a budget amendment, is that if there's staff that we have to let go because of this, you know, we potentially wouldn't, maybe go for other places if we're short staff. That's my only concern with having to wait until July when we do the budget amendment. And then, just, if it's possible, can we get a copy of this, because it wasn't linked, and it's hard to read some of the slides from over here.
Yeah.
The $250,000 you're talking about, is that reflected at all on the slide before that had any positions, or that has no bearing? That would be additional.
The $250,000 would be a portion of whatever the administrators decided to, whichever positions they decided to take. But we won't know how much, so there is a possibility that what the state budget shows, what the governor's budget shows is what is. So, there's always that possibility out there. So, $250,000 from the reserves, and I stated last week that it's Save Harmless plus the 3% is about $450,000, so it does not cover all of those positions listed on that slide, but it does put some funds towards those positions.
Understood. Just want to state that New York Governor and the rest of the group is just totally irresponsible, not having a firm budget for us to move on, but I don't see how we could wait any longer, and I'm not sure what's going to come out of the next few days, so... Right. I mean, if we had assurances that within the next couple of days, we'd know what we're getting. Right, convening for a special meeting, about the budget. We're throwing darts up in the air and not knowing where they're landing right now. And by Monday, we still might not have a firm decision of where the allocation of those funds are going.
funds are going.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of obligations and timelines that are represented there and others, so.
Right. Just so everyone knows that even if we do adopt this evening, or we adopt Monday without knowing what the governor and how they're going to divvy these funds up, and we do receive them later on, like Lindsay said earlier, we can do a budget amendment after July. Unfortunately, you know, some of those cuts might be moving on to other positions in other districts, and we're going to lose those individuals, but we will be able to put back some of those positions at that point in time with a budget amendment. At this point in time, we're handcuffed a little bit from the state. It's unfortunate. I know our staff has lobbied a lot of the state politicians for more money. I don't think it's fell on deaf ears. Hopefully, they've heard everyone across the state, and it does look like, you know, with that $1.3 billion that they're putting in back into education, hopefully, it's given to those districts that are struggling. Some districts, they don't have any issues with making cuts to meet their budget requirements, but a lot of them do. So hopefully, that money's going to those that are in need right now.
I think that one of the difficult pieces, if you don't mind me jumping in.
Go right ahead.
Some districts are, they are well-funded in their reserves, and they have reserves that are probably very healthy and over-funded. We are not one of those districts. So when the governor, when the governor says that we should go to our reserves, it's not really an option for us to go deep into our reserves, otherwise, we're putting ourselves in a very difficult situation for future years down the road. Just one point, the very last statement in the article that came out at 5:00 from the School Boards Association, and this one kind of boils my blood a little bit, the statement, and I don't know if she said it or someone else said it, is that the state reserves, they're at 15% for a quote-unquote rainy day. Well, the storm is here, it's time for the state to take some of the money out of their reserves to help school districts that do not have reserves at the 4% that we're allowed to have. I think the time has come, and that's the message that we will continue with our legislators. Unfortunately, I don't believe that's going to be in time for us to do anything other than the current budget as it stands.
And taking, just taking also into consideration the Donigan presentation that we had and what our five-year lookout is, to utilize all of the reserves to help this will just put us in a situation that's more challenging for next year and the year after, because we are looking at the next two to three years. That could be a challenge. But I do believe that that ERS reserve as a one-time offering because of the fact of the increase that they have and taking it out, and we still have two extra years in that reserve to fund it, that even if we did not receive any extra aid, that would still be in the district's best interest if we could.
Thank you for wringing the dish towel as much as we possibly can. I understand for sure, but.
No, and I hope, you know, board members understand that. I mean, the reserves are there for a purpose. We utilize those reserves. I mean, we have to refund them at some point in time. We just can't keep kicking the can down the road, because it might not get any easier in the future years. Currently, we're making copies of that presentation for board members. If you want, we can go through our consent agenda, we can come back. Once you have, those in front of you have an opportunity to go through, and we can go through our budget. I mean, we have the option of adopting a budget this evening or moving it to the latest of Monday.
Can I, I mean, what do we have to lose by waiting until Monday?
We don't have anything to lose.
Just, I have a quick question, Lindsay. I'm sorry, I can't look at you while I'm talking.
That's okay.
For the ERS reserve, so you're proposing to take out of that restricted reserve, which can only be used for employee retirement, use that for some of the increase that we're seeing in order to be able to utilize some of the funding that's in the budget in order to maintain positions. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, with using that 250, we would still have two years' worth of payments left in that reserve for ERS?
That's also correct. So the money, so the funding, that's, the ERS reserve would go to where, to where the ERS line, the budget line is, and then I would take what was out of that and put it into instructional?
Okay. The only other question I have, and maybe seeing the presentation will help, but you, in looking at the reserve projections, going from the 2.5% that we're at, going up to 4%, but then on the next slide, you said we're not going to be allocating any additional funds toward those restricted reserves. So how do we get from the 2.5% to the 4%?
No, unrestricted is from 2 to 4. So we are going to fill that up, because there could be a possibility with insurance or with this tax cert that we don't know when it's going to come.
So it's the unrestricted reserve?
Yes, unrestricted reserve. But the restricted reserve, we're only filling that portion of the tax cert reserve, which we know is coming due at some point.
Okay. And I'll just say, from my perspective, even being able to see the presentation while we're meeting, I personally would prefer to wait to the very last minute, because I think then it really does put it on the state and reflects poorly on them, that we waited as long as we absolutely possibly could. To me, the only thing we're incurring is more time on our behalf, and I'm certainly willing to do that to the last minute that we possibly can.
And since there was, and the reason why we did this tonight is since there was no other board meetings scheduled, I have to present the budget tonight as follows, because our next one doesn't until this.
Yeah, absolutely. Nothing on, nothing on our administration. We have to do what we have to do, and continually appreciate you guys moving forward with it as much as you can. I would just prefer to wait as long as I possibly can, be able to digest some of the information that you sent out, so that if on Monday, we do not get any other information, I'm kind of armed with already thinking through everything that we've been presented with and making a decision moving forward.
Lindsay, you might not have the answer to this, and I've never come across this in all my years up here, but if we were to adopt this evening, and then, let's say, tomorrow, we hear where this budget is going to land, can we rescind that resolution of adoption of that budget and then approve one whenever we reconvene?
I don't believe so. My discussion with the attorney was, once you adopt the budget, then it won't be able to be amended until after July 1st.
No, I'm looking at a full quorum here this evening, and to try to, if we have to meet on Monday, we might not have a full quorum, and we're scrambling, so we have to make sure we can make that happen for Monday at the latest. Who's eligible? I mean, who's going to be here Monday or be available? I believe so. It sounds like we're going to have a quorum. We're going to have six, definite six. All right, do you want to have an opportunity to look at this, and we'll bring it back up later on after we do our consent, if you have any further discussion, Camille, or you want to wait until we meet again?
Yeah, I'm fine waiting until Monday.
And if anything does change, if it does change, then you will present us with a another.
If it changes on, even if it changes on Monday, I will do my best to get all of the figures ready for you. It's just going to be another last minute like this. Yes.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yes.
We'll move on to our consent items from EA 1 to C.2. Again, like we normally do, if there's any items that you want to pull out, vote on separately, if there's any items that you have questions or concerns about, we'll ask, you can have those answered before we move forward.
Essentially, C.3.
C.3, I'm sorry. C.3. Yep. All right, can I have a motion to move the consent item forward? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Any discussion? I have, Lindsay, I have two questions in regards to the Quest environmental resolution and the Atlantic testing resolution. I know it states purchase order for Quest of 66,455, and for Atlantic of 40,000. Are they not to exceed numbers? Because it might feel when we do environmental testing and you do third-party testing, those numbers fluctuate. They can exceed that 40 or exceed that 66,455. What is those two numbers based on?
That's based on the quote. So if, we would have to amend it if they went over.
So it's not a, not to exceed number, it's a firm quote.
It's based on the quote, yes. And we can amend it if.
All right. My only question would be is, if it exceeds that number, what is it based on? Do we have unit prices?
I can ask.
So, so in essence, we're approving 40,000 or 66,455. That could exceed that by double.
Only based on the estimated number of times and hours of testing that they require to do as well.
Okay. All right. Everybody okay with that? All right. Yeah, I wasn't aware of a firm number there. I thought it was going to be, you know, based on unit prices, because now we're locked somewhat. We're, yeah.
If it exceeds, then.
Right. And if it doesn't exceed, is there credits due to the district?
But what if we only have $30,000 worth of testing done? Do we get charged 30, or do we get charged 40?
30.
Okay. So it's not, it's not a fixed amount?
Yes.
It's just fixed based on the cost of each test they're doing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right, anyone else have any other questions or concerns? We'll, motion on the floor by Heather, second by Camille. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried? Principal's monthly report. We're going to mix this up a little bit. Ian, how about the high school go first? Sox are going to change colors.
Good evening, all. Just one quick update to my board report. Last night was the Brooks Annual Barbecue Fundraiser, sponsored by the PTSA. It was relocated this year. Usually takes place outside the athletic office, but this year, due to the construction project that's taking place, we decided to, with Pete Miller's help, have it over at the firehouse off of New Paltz Road. They were very helpful, and Mr. Miller, thank you for accommodating that change. PTSA did very well. They were successful with their fundraising attempts, and they profited what they had hoped, you know, what they kind of anticipated. So, yeah, it went very well. Any questions at all? Thank you.
Okay, Ian, you're up. I didn't want to see you pout.
All right, here we go. Two quick things I just need to add to my board report. Our garden club is up and underway. We are obviously utilizing our brand-new greenhouse that was part of that project with Nadia Metz last year, so that's underway. And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our PE department and Kathy, also transportation, for setting up such a good bowling trip for our fifth graders for their annual spins trip. So that was super successful, and I got a lot of feedback from different parents about how much fun their kids had, so. Question?
Yeah, I have one question, one comment. So the first one, so the suggestion from No Voice Too Small, just curious about some of the suggestions that were, that you received from the students. For the No Voice.
No Voice, yeah. The box?
Yes, the box, yes.
Yes. What did we get so far, you said?
Yeah.
I was like, wait.
There were many responses, but the direct committee was really responsible for going to recording and categorizing what kids had great ideas. They want to pretend to be the principal for the day. Basketball game on staff. Yes, quiet, we must, I mean, back to like, white, kids are smart, yes.
And the other one wants a comment, so I'm looking forward to seeing the pictures with the llama kissing.
So, so the llama kissing might go livestream this weekend. I have a friend that might have llamas. We'll call them llamas. They might look a lot like alpacas, but they, they're llamas. They're a lot friendlier, I've heard. So, yep, that's happening, and Miss Ace's class, she's here, her class obviously raised the most amount of money, so our PTA is buying a bunch. They're gonna, the kids are gonna paint me. They got these like paintball things that explode, and so I'm gonna try to find some white suit and, you know, make it a little bit more colorful. It should be, right. It won't be before a board meeting, I won't wear this. And then, yeah, so we did pretty, we did pretty well with the kids' art challenge.
Any other questions? I did hear that you can get a bed rash kissing a llama.
Good thing that llamas we're using now.
Or an alpaca, whatever, you can get a bed rash.
Should see, see how this goes.
Okay. Andrew, you're up.
Good evening. I only have one update that was not on your report, and that's that we have, we had a meeting, we've had many meetings about New York State testing, so we have some dates firmed up that we're going to be sending out to students and kids, and you'll be seeing that as well. So that is not on my report, but that will be coming out very soon. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for all the detail that was put into the report, including the pictures and everything. It certainly, as I was reading through it, I was like, this will be something we reflect back on someday and smile.
We're all smiling now, too. Any other questions?
Any other questions for middle school? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, our directors' reports. Anybody have any questions for our directors? I think most of them are here this evening, so you can shout out to them.
I think they all deserve a thank you for the heavy lift. You know, preparing our school within a school concept, and we saw the reports were full of those things. So I just appreciate everybody coming together, and includes the staff here, just trying to make this work. We're a week in and a few more to go, and we'll end this year, so thank you.
For Athletic Department, Frank, with the inability to use our track and field here, how are those spring sports functioning right now? Track is out at New Paltz?
We go to New Paltz much of the week, and we go to Palm Springs when we're out there. The weather stays like this, they, yesterday, we'll be fine. We've had a couple days of rain, we'll be out. Things a little different, but everything's going to be fine.
And for the track, are we busing kids to and from New Paltz on Mondays, or? Are we doing bus transportation to New Paltz?
Yes.
To and from?
Yes, to. To.
Is there?
It's not, it's not a lot.
It's not, it's not a lot, not a lot of kids are taking advantage of it right now.
Are you noticing a change in participation on those days because of the trip to New Paltz? Like is there a drop-off between Mondays and Tuesdays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays because of the going to New Paltz?
Um, no, I think right now we're fine. With going there and then you have tragedies now, so we maybe have to worry about something this week, and they matter early, so we stay out of July.
Mr. Miller, in regards to the capital project, both predi, primarily Phase One, is there any supply chain issues that you've been told that could impact the completion of the project this summer currently? Good.
I believe I saw an email that the lockers are done and ready to come here for installation, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So they're being, they're stored on their site, but the lockers are finished, and so that should be a quick install.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for our directors?
Yeah, just wanted to ask quickly, Mr. Miller, if you wouldn't be able to just give the community just a quick update on the restoration at the middle school. I know you put some in your report. I've just been out and about in the community and really grumblings about, not grumblings, but concerns that are we going to be able to go back in September? And I just want to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page. So if you wouldn't mind, just a quick update on how that restoration's going.
So, we had a meeting last Friday, we have another meeting on twenty-sixth, I mean, is in regard to private, as we move forward. Right now, I think the decision is near, we are looking to obtain a whole bunch of information on things that need to get replaced and moving forward with allocating who is going to purchase that material, mostly through the consultants and vendors and nicer pads, not through us, and quite a good few of our vendors to nicer. So that's happening. We know that there are some, there was some significant questions about ventilation equipment and things that have been answered, so there's less work that's going to be done, ventilation equipment, other than cleaning and testing. Everything will be tested extensively before it's put to service or accepted. Kitchen is the biggest issue at this point in time, the kitchen will be completely gutted, all ventilation and everything, because the deck that's above it underneath the vacuum has to be respraying with fireproofing material and all that equipment and everything has to go back in there. We're currently working with our architect and engineer to develop a plan which sounds like that, so make a problem, but it's not because we have all the plans for two thousand and one and two thousand and sixteen renovations, so that will be the final, the final plan of what has to be replaced. Some of the complicating factors are all the wires and electro data and everything that went through the kitchens and much other places that have to be changed, taken out and replaced. And some of the old ones, they go from, sort of room to switch in the sixth grade and things like that. So those things we're starting to put together and moving forward with. We're also looking to coordinate capital budget with fire alarm and P A system being done, because all the ceilings are down in the hallway, so you don't have to take ceilings down or, or put up new ceilings, take it down for the backup. So a lot of that, we're trying to coordinate that. Right now, it's a little rough on the edges, but I would say that within the next two weeks we'll have a lot more understanding of how that's all going to work together. There's absolutely positively a goal that will be back in the fall by September, and it's a priority, and they, they just stay hopeless enough as possible.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to our student rep, Lily.
Okay. So I'm gonna start with my elementary school updates. The third-grade classrooms of Ms. Summerfeld, Ms. Echter, and Ms. Elliott recently hosted writing celebrations, making the curriculum of their students' writing journey underway. During these celebrations, parents, students, staff members, and administration came together to witness the culmination of the students' hard work and creativity. The atmosphere was one of excitement and pride as everyone gathered to listen to the students' ideas, admire their illustrations, and engage in discussion about the concepts and themes explored in their writing pieces. Each student works was showcased and celebrated, highlighting their individual voices and unique perspectives. Mr. McCormick and Mrs. Samuel were happy to see students share their work and receive recognition for their efforts. The writing celebrations are a testament to the dedication of the students, the support of their families, and the commitment of the teachers to nurture and celebrate the growth of each student as a writer. In the middle school, the Highland Middle School wanted to give a big thank you to the high school students, staff, administration for being so kind and welcoming to the middle school people. They understand how difficult it can be to change course in the year and are truly appreciative to everyone for their help in making this happen. The middle school students and staff are starting to settle in at the high school as their first full week has concluded. They have been some growing pains, but everyone is happy to have a home base for the remainder of the school year. As the year progresses, they hope that they can make Highland High School a true home away from home. Next week, on April the twenty-fourth, the eighth graders will be going on a trip to see the Renegades play, which will be a nice break and a chance to have some fun with their classmates. At the high school, spring sports are in full swing, and we're off to a great start with track and fields, lacrosse, flag football, softball, baseball, tennis, and golf. Dr. Murphy's mission of filling the hallways with the faces of extracurricular activities is underway, and we now have group pictures up from all of our clubs, fall sports, winter sports, and soon, spring sports to come. And this project has done a really great job at making every student feel seen and appreciated and acknowledged in our school, now having all the faces of the extracurriculars on the walls. Last night, our senior class got back from their senior trip to Disney World. That was very nice. And junior and senior prom is approaching, which will be Friday, April twenty-sixth, at the Bickipsy Grand. Also, pay mind to the civics showcase invitations that I placed in front of you. This is gonna be the thirtieth, and it's a great opportunity to see what the students of Highland High School have been up to in order to earn their civic seal of readiness. And that's all I have for you guys. So, any questions?
Any questions for Lily?
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Soup of Human Resources, pupil personnel, Dr. Boyd.
Good evening. One of the things we've been working on over the past few years is trying to include more electronic submissions for paperwork and trying to reduce our amount of paper. So this week, our PPS staff had been doing some training. We have a lot of paperwork for our preschool students with disabilities and our stacks and all the paperwork that we have to do, so we're moving to electronic in that area, which will streamline the process and speed things up for our families and the county and payments for everyone. So we'll be moving towards that. And in the next few weeks, we're gonna have our biannual Medicaid meeting with our advisory group. So after that meeting, I'll be able to provide our updated reimbursements for the year for our Medicaid services.
Any questions? Thank you. Assistant Soup for Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Zimmer.
Good evening, everyone. I have two items to share with you this evening. First is a UPK update. While we are waiting for approval of a New York State budget, we are preparing to accommodate eighty pre-K seats for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Starting tomorrow, April seventeenth, the application window opens. Information including frequently asked questions and the lottery application can be found on our district's website. Spots will once again be assigned using a random lottery selection process. The lottery application period will close on Friday, May tenth, and the selection process will take place in May to determine which students are eligible to register for the program. We will email each applicant after the lottery to let them know whether their student was selected or placed on the waiting list. And a reminder that students must turn four-years-old on or before December first, two thousand twenty-four, to be eligible. Next, over the next two days, I'll be at the Second Annual New York State Education Department School Safety Summit in Albany's Empire State Plaza Convention Center. The summit will provide training, information, and resources on topics related to emergency response planning and creating a safe and supportive environment for the whole school community. Some of the presentations will include communications before, during, and after a tragedy, lockdown drills one oh one, from implementation to impact, understanding equity as a preventative approach to school safety, and the role of school climate in bullying and cyberbullying as prevention. Having found last year's summit invaluable, I am eager to participate again this year and share key takeaways with the Board of Education at our next meeting.
Bill, UPK last year, how many students do we have in the lottery for those forty, forty-two seats?
We have forty seats for the school year, and there are eighty students were entered in the lottery. So we were able to provide pre-K for half of them.
For half of them. So hopefully this year...
Hopefully...
We can pretty much provide for all of them.
So we'll still do a lottery based on the, the choice of which... So even if we do have eighty seats and we have eighty applicants, we'll still do a lottery as far as who gets to go where. So, I'm hopeful about that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Zimmer? Okay. Our superintendent?
Okay. So we have scheduled our school business official interviews for this coming Friday, and the middle school principal position vacancy interviews will happen next Thursday. Our hope is to have finalists to the Board of Edu, or finalists for each one of those to the Board of Education at the next meeting so that we can get folks approved, so they have time, if they are in existing positions, to, to vacate them so that they can start with us promptly on July one. I've been working closely with Ulster Boses on our budget newsletter. That's, we do that every year. That's that newspaper that's in the blue ink. The stories are all ready to go. We're just waiting for the information that hopefully we will have on Monday evening so that we can get that newsletter printed and out to our community. Just a reminder that our budget presentations are being scheduled. Be talking to the principals tomorrow about their faculty meetings, their PTA meetings. Rotary is scheduled for the last Wednesday of April, and then we'll have our official budget forum on May seventh. And that mosquito is gonna get me before tonight's over with. We are in the process of working out plans for graduation and moving up ceremonies. I know people are very eager to find out what we are going to do with those. We are committed to having those ceremonies here in Highland to make them convenient for our families, so we're working out details, especially for the middle school and the elementary school moving up ceremonies, because we have used the middle school gymnasium for the last few years, so we'll be discussing that tomorrow. The high school graduation plans are to use the field behind the, the, I don't know the hallway, A Wing, C Wing, behind the C Wing, and make it just as lovely a venue as our typical football field, and we will be getting that information out to families in the near future. Tonight, the board will be voting on the Boses budget, which is needed to be done this evening. But just so that the community is aware, there is a video by Dr. Schenker, the District Superintendent of Ulster Boses, explaining his budget for all component districts and parents from, and, and community members from across Ulster County. That is on his website, and I shared it with the Board of Education in my update on Friday so that they were informed, which I think is a nice thing. In the past, it's just been a presentation that's been done at the annual meeting, which was last Thursday night. He sent a video this year so that people can get that information firsthand.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent?
Just with the business official interviews? I know it's gonna be based on whatever, thirty days, two days, as far as the person coming in, but if possible, can we make sure there's an opportunity to have some type of transition?
Absolutely. Our, I mean, our goal, we kept the posting open a little bit longer than we normally would to try to garner some more applicants. That is always a difficult and pretty sensitive one to fill. We want to make sure it's the right person and has an understanding of what we need them to understand here to make sure that all of the good work that has been done in the year or two that I've, I mean, it's many years, but definitely in the years that I've been in this position, I've had some great people working in that position, and I want to make sure that that continues along that same vein. So those interviews are this, those are, interviews are this Friday. I don't believe I will have a candidate for you for Monday night, but... I'm hoping for the May seventh, so, yeah. Okay.
Is there a, what was the pool of candidates that you chose from? Was there a large pool?
There was a pool that I think some folks go on OLOS, which is our clearinghouse where we advertise these positions, and I think people just apply for everything that's out there. So there were, I believe, eighteen or nineteen applicants. Most of them were not qualified. Most of them were not certified and definitely not qualified. So I would rather drag my feet a little bit longer, if that's what I need to do, to make sure I get the right person in, into that position. So I'm optimistic that we have a few candidates that we're meeting with this week, and if that does not garner a quality match for us, we will go back out, and I'm not opposed to calling around and looking for an interim if that's what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay. New business? Does anyone have any new business you want to bring up? We have some old business. No new business, we'll go to old business.
I have one, one quick update, just an update of the results from the spring gala. So the gala that was held two weeks ago now? Yeah, April fifth. The educational foundation raised nine thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents for, to be used for the outdoor classroom at, for the furniture of the outdoor classroom at the elementary school. The foundation will round that up, so we'll be donating a total of ten thousand for that furniture.
Thank you to that committee for working hard and diligently to make that happen. Okay, old business, Highland Central School District Board candidate nominating petitions, they're out. If you still want to pick some up, one up, you can. Deadline is this Friday at five P M.
No, Monday.
Sorry. Monday. Monday at five P M. Boses Administrative Budget Vote. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to look at Dr. Schenker's video highlighting the budget for Ulster Boses. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, approves the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Educational Services administrative budget in the amount of seven million one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carry. Boses Ballot for Election. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, recommends the election of the following candidate to serve in the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Seat number one, Highland, three-year term, July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, Susan Gilmore. Seat two, Antioa, three-year term, July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, Valerie Story. Seat number three, Roundout Valley, one-year, unexpired term, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, Lucy Van Sickle. Seat number four, Walk Hill, three-year... Seat number four, Walk Hill, three-year term, July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027, William Heck. Seat number five, At Large, three-year term, July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027, Steven Spicer. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Janine. Discussion?
Right on my ear.
Came from, and I'll pass though. We have a motion by Tom, seconded by Janine. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried. Want to thank Sue Gilmore for serving another term, representing Highland. Okay, we do not have our cell phone policy on tonight's agenda. Give you guys the opportunity to review any information. I know OnBoard this month had the front page talking about cell phones, so if you have an opportunity to read that entire article, very interesting.
Do you all get that newspaper? Okay, so I don't need to make a copy to make sure you have it?
We'll get it, yeah. Mike Picosius was able to provide us with a policy, a draft policy, so take a look at that. Also, review our electronics policy, which coincides with the cell phone policy, and also, our superintendent had sent us out a month or so ago, some area districts that have cell phone policies in effect, so take a look at that. All right, anything for the good and welfare of the district?
Just a question with the cell phones, so we have any feedback? Should we, are we going to put that on another agenda, or should we email that to make for the policy committee?
If you have questions or concerns, just email them to the entire board. I know Mike being on the committee with, who else, I believe, administrative staff is on that, saw that policy committee to review it, and we can add some input.
Yeah, I mean, were we going to meet to make recommendations to the board? At this point, I believe the board is deliberating on one way or the other.
Correct. Yeah, I think we'll have, we'll finalize it before, not too long. We have two more meetings in May. We can finalize it and have it in place to implement for September. I think we did get feedback from staff several meetings ago, and we did have, you know, the surveys. We had our high school principal interview staff to get their feedback. So, I think there's a lot of information out there. I think at this point, we're going to start moving forward to bring it all together, and like you said, deliberate and move that policy forward. But, yeah, please read some of those articles. Anything else for the good and welfare of the district? Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment for general items.
I'm Laura Finch. I'm a second grade teacher here, and I live in Highland, so I'm a parent as well. I just wanted to say thank you for the board and Lindsay for agreeing to put in the extra work, to wait until the last possible minute. As a data person, I like to have my numbers in order, and I know that you guys are being very selfless in delaying adopting a budget. It was said at this meeting that putting up an amendment might cause us to lose people, but will hopefully restore positions, and I would just like to argue that the positions are the people. When my daughters talk about their experiences here at Highland, it's the people that they mentioned. When they look forward to the electives, or they look forward to their core classes that are coming up, it's the people that they mention. So, I just want you to keep that in mind, that those positions are the people, and then to delay this vote, we will be losing those people, including some that my own daughters are very much looking forward to working with. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Casey Gallagher. I am the current elementary art teacher, tenured, been here five years, possibly the soon-to-be former elementary art teacher, unfortunately. So, I have no idea what to say. I did not prepare anything, but I would definitely be remiss if I didn't advocate for the arts and caution of dropping the art department below four people. And then to second Laura, you know, yes, I'm an art teacher. I teach art, I teach skills, and that's great. But, you know, I think five years ago at opening day, Bon Jovi just talked about relationships, and that's what my job is. And I've cried like five years. And, you know, I know every kid in that building, and have for five years, so to see them, it's very, very difficult. So, I have nothing concrete to add, except to say thank you for the five years, and I hope it's not the end of the...
Anyone else?
Kevin Rizzo again. Hopefully, this is the last time we have to speak about this. I got to know a lot of these teachers on a firsthand basis while we've been working to lobby our government officials at this point in time. And in coming to know them, Alan, we've joked in the past, these are first-round picks that we're cutting at this point in time. These are, these are great teachers, and hearing their story and hearing what others had to say about them and other students had to say about them, there are going to be a tremendous loss to this district at this point in time. And I ask one more time, and thank you for extending until Monday. If there's any other way that we can, we can work and reduce the amount of cuts to, I'm asking for nothing. I want to see all these teachers come back. I want to work with all these teachers. They want to work with us. We have a great staff. We've built amazing programs here, and at this point, it would be dismantling, not a cut. So, I ask the entire board to go back over the next few days, and if there's any other solutions, please, please pull them out. We did get good news with the $1.3 billion today. What that looks like, I hope it's, I hope it's, I hope it's really good for us, but to wait until July, we're going to lose first-round picks. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Just in closing, it is, it is very difficult for this board, and some board members are new to this process. I've always said it, for all the years that I've served on this board, the most difficult time is budget season, especially when we're not giving the resources that we need to satisfy the educational needs that we want to provide to our student body. On the other side, the most enjoyable piece of sitting up here as a board member come June, when we celebrate all the accomplishments of every one of our students, including the staff that put numerous years into Highland Central School District that retired, and we celebrate their contribution to the district. So, it's, it is, it is difficult. I've sat through in my term here as a board member probably four situations where we had to make significant cuts to staffing, and it, it does hurt. Believe me, we, you know, we look at every avenue, and I know Kevin at one time asked us not to leave any stone unturned. I don't think this administrative staff has left any stone unturned. We tried to look at every avenue possible to minimize the impact to the, to the district, but it's unfortunate. Let's keep our fingers crossed that, that $1.3 billion that our so-called governor has given us, or is going to allow us to share, a good portion of it comes our way, and that's the only hope we have right now. So, I appreciate everybody's patience. We'll do our best, and I appreciate the board looking to extend to the, to the end to make that decision, because it's going to be a tough decision. So, thank you. Anybody have any comments? Okay, we'll ask for an adjournment.
Do we, do we want to set a time? Are we going to set a 7 o'clock time for Monday, or are we going to try to do it earlier in the evening? Just, I think we need to announce that this evening.
Right, what's good for everyone? The earliest would be 6 for most members?
I would prefer to do it earlier if we could. I'd say 6 o'clock.
Leave it at 7?
6 o'clock, yeah.
6? Everybody good at 6?
I can do sit to earlier.
We'll establish 6 o'clock Monday.
So, 6 o'clock Monday?
22nd.
April 22nd.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Janine, seconded by Heather. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.